The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting. Tonight is March 19th, 7:00 p.m. I will ask you to stand here in the fudge and counsel woman for anti-legalism, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll go right into the minutes of the previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, a motion to approve the minutes from March 1st, 2018, special meeting, March 8th, 2018, public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Does anybody have any announcements or reports tonight to make?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just three quick things from the three groups to which I am the liaison. Library Board, I was not able to make their meeting last week. We were here for a budget meeting, but of course, they are in the process of selecting their new library director as town manager Lee, which we spoke about last week. Conservation Commission, last week, planning for river cleanups. Also continued discussion of the fracking waste issue, including, you know, just some discussion about the proposed state legislation. And Committee on Aging, lots of upcoming programs, including an outdoor adventures open house on March 27th. That's a group of activities which have really gained in popularity. And they're applying again for the grant from the North Central Area Agency on Aging that covers a number of different things at the senior center.
Great, thanks so much. Does anybody else have anything to report?
Yes, I do. Two things related to the Plainville Housing Authority. The first one is the waiting list for the Plainville Housing Authority will be opening May 22nd, 23rd, and 24th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 20 Stillwell Drive in the Sunset Community Room. Anybody who's interested may stop in and fill out an application, or you can call during their hours from, again, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Or they can also mail an application if you're interested. Their number is 860-747-5909. And then the other thing is, the Plainville Housing Authority has a new Facebook page, Plainville Housing Authority, so check it out. Something else in town.
Does anybody else have anything to report? Appointments and resignations, number one.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
A motion to accept with regret the resignation of Aberta Loria from the Conservation Commission.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any other appointments to make tonight?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint to give new Wetlands Commission Core Regular English for the term of January 17 through January 7, 2022, Steven Emendorf, Robert Rochelle, Patrick Kilby, and Esther Patrick, if you may.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any other appointments?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to appoint as an alternate member to the Inland Wetlands Commission for the term of January 7, 2015 through January 7, 2019, Trudy Kajinko.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have any other appointments or reappointments to the boards tonight that we didn't have on our list? I'll take that to be a no. Thank you very much. Board of Education, Chairperson Saunders, do you have a report for us?
Thank you. Good evening. Hi, Andrea Saunders, 55, Fondery. Okay, let's see, last week, Dr. Bromett, Mr. Principal Medic, Mr. Farrell, and Mr. Bussell met with the architects regarding the PHS paving project. It's set to begin the day after school gets out, currently the last day, pending no more additional snow days since June 20th. The paving will be done in stages, starting with the areas closest to the athletic fields. PHS summer school will still be held in the high school, and the project is expected to be concluded prior to the first day back for teachers, which is August 29th. Mr. Farrell is reaching out to the organizers of the Pettit Road Race to alert them to the paving project. Dr. Bromett's already spoken to Dr. Pettit to work it out, so they have a good plan for this year's race on July 22nd. Last Wednesday on March 14th, about 200 PHS students, they had instead of a walk out, they had what they called a walk-in to honor the 17 victims of the Parkland shooting. A few board members, Dr. Bromett, Mr. Lepage, and I were able to observe the students, and they all conducted themselves in a very orderly manner. They came in, they did their 17 minutes, a few people spoke, they said all the victims' names, and then they went back to class. The administration and the staff, with the support of the Plainville Police Department, did an amazing job ensuring that the event was orderly and imposed no disruption to the operation of PHS. And as promised, students who chose not to participate remained in their regularly-scheduled Also last week, a few board members with Dr. Bromett attended an event, it's called Cave Day on the Hill, where we go up and we speak to our legislators, let them know things that we're thinking about. And obviously, the big thing that we talked about was the ECS funding and the mid-year cuts. Every legislator that spoke, it was mostly ones from the Education Committee, assured us that they were looking into the bill so that they understand that budgets are very hard to predict once you start cutting in the middle of the year. So we're hoping that they do something in regards to that. Last week, let's see, the building principals, facilities, Daco, Dr. Bromett, Mr. Lepage met to continue their ongoing discussion regarding security procedures, and Sergeant Markey has been very supportive of their efforts. Some of their key outcomes included the need to order more walkie-talkies to ensure appropriate communication between all staff during the day, the need to communicate via signage and press releases that the public cannot be on school grounds during the school day, and the need for additional training for staff and students regarding a variety of emergency scenarios. And then last but not least, this Friday night, March 23rd, from 6:30 to 9:00, the PHS class of 2018 is having their annual Project Grad fundraiser. It's called a Sweet Affair Dessert Showcase. Adults are $10, students are $5, and that will include a sampling of 10 desserts from a variety of local restaurants, including Bolos, Nazos, edible arrangements, Rita's of Farmington, JV's Taproom, J. Timothys, Aqua Turf, and many more. And anyone that is interested in tickets can purchase them at the PHS main office. And that's all I have.
If you have any questions for Mrs. Saunders' report? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Mike?
Good evening.
Do you have a report for us tonight?
I have my own, Chair, for tonight.
Thank you. Robert, it's your turn.
Just a couple of brief items. The first is the dog park location. The Dog Park Committee has made a recommendation to utilize town land located at the end of Norton Place Extension for future dog parks. If this location is approved by the town council, the Dog Park Committee will begin fundraising efforts to pay for the construction of the facility. The Dog Park Committee has stated that if this location is approved, that they will raise the funds to construct the park. They will organize volunteers to monitor and clean up the park as necessary. On January 2nd of this year, a public hearing was held. Residents were given the opportunity to comment on the proposed location. A petition in support of the proposed location containing over 600 names was submitted to the town council as well. There is an item of the new business this evening regarding the recommendation to locate a dog park on town land located at Norton Place Extension. Next item I have is the financial dashboard. It does cover the period through February 28th, was included in your meeting package this evening, although it has been updated since we received the ASO report, I believe it was, today. And I'm going to turn it over to Scott to give that report and also to speak on happenings, and then we'll be available to answer questions when we call it.
Good evening. Looking at the expenditures through February 28th, 2018, the town has spent $36.2 million. This equates to 60.7%. It's right around, or actually running a little lower than our two-year average. This is obviously taking into account some of the issues that have been happening in the state. We've been looking to save money as well as we can. The general government side, through the end of the month, we've spent 16.7% or 69.2%. We're right around our two-year average. And on the Board of Ed side, they've spent 19.5 million out of their $35 million budget. This is actually 6.3% lower than their two-year average. Moving down to the hauler tonnages, we are going over by 231 tons. Right now, we're coming in at a little over 3,500 tons. Onto overtime, the budget amount for police is $450,000. So far, through the end of the month, we've spent $347,000 or 77.24%. We are running 21% lower than our two-year average. Our two-year average has come in at 98%. Moving down to roadways, we have spent 82.2% to date. This is actually 61.3% lower than our two-year average. The number is a little skewed on that two-year average. It's part of that Northwest Drive paving project that took place a few years back. Moving down to buildings and grounds, we are running at 99.1% spend. We're right around our two-year average for that. Our two-year average is 101%. Now onto the snow, roadway snow overtime. We are right in line with our two-year average, although this does not take into account the recent storms that we have had during the month of March. And in buildings and grounds, snow overtime, we are running at 57.2% spend, which is 6.85% lower than our two-year average. Also, this doesn't include any of the storms that have occurred in March. Moving on to the revenues portion, through the end of the month, we have received $49.3 million. This equates to 83%. Our two-year average is 89.26%. This is 6.26% lower, and that's because we do have a higher base now that we have the supplemental tax bill, so it kind of throws off a little bit. Also, we have some of the lost revenues from the state in here as well that we won't be receiving. For current taxes, we've received 93.5%. Our two-year average is 98.9%. We're about 5.3% lower. This also is because of the new higher base with the supplemental tax bill that was out. Looking at the unassigned fund balance, we're sitting at about $8.1 million or 13.95%. Moving on to the special funds, looking at recreation expenditures, they're running at 69.7%. This is 3.5% higher, and we're talking with the finance director, this comes down to just some of the timing of things. Looking at the revenues portion of the recreation budget, they are running at 6.2% lower than our two-year average. Right now, we're running at 57.54% spend received. Looking at the Robertson Airport expenditures, we've spent 90.63%. Our two-year average is skewed. That includes some of the gray monies and the projects that were taking place at the airport a few years back. Looking at the revenue side of the airport, we are 7.18% lower than our two-year average. A lot of this also comes down to the timing of when things are being put into the accounts. For WPC expenditures, we're looking at 67% spent through the end of the month. This is 2.39% lower. And the revenues received, right now, we've received 96.95% or 4.08% lower than our two-year average. And the expenditures for the library are sitting at about 69.57% or 3.7% lower than our two-year average. And our revenues for the library coming in at 74.7%, which is 3.2% higher than our two-year average. Moving on to the health insurance fund, the claims that we've received for February, the new report that we've received today, actually, our expected claims were $487,062. They came in at $751,336. Our year-to-date claims are 4.9, and our expected claims were 3.8. Moving on to the major projects report, as of February 28th, the only projects that have had any sort of transactions made were for the phosphorus removal project, in which an invoice in the amount of $13,000 was sent, and the Wheeler School project for $198. Moving on to the happenings, on Tuesday, March 20th, at 7:00 p.m., the Plainville Historic Center will be hosting the Connecticut Women's Hall of Fame. It's the Powerful Voices, Connecticut Women Changing Democracy. And this program is sponsored by the Plainville Historical Society and presented by the Hall of Fame for Women. On April 4th, at the Plainville Middle School, from 6:15 to 8:00 p.m., they're hosting a free program for parents and caregivers. It's going to feature remarks by State Representative Dr. William Pettit, delicious healthy food samples from local chefs, and they'll showcase fun and healthy activities for children and families. They're also going to have prizes and giveaways. Due to type 2 diabetes and other lifestyle diseases, this may be a first generation of children that have shorter life expectancies than their parents. Learn how you can reverse this trend by making healthy food choices and an interactive lifestyle part of your everyday. Please register by March 26th at evenbright.com or through the Healthy Plainville Facebook page. For more information, please contact Roberta Brown. Her number is 860-793-0221, extension 261. Moving on to the senior center, they're having a class on diabetes. What is it? How do I live with it? On Friday, March 23rd, 10:30 a.m. What is diabetes? Does anyone die from this disease? What are the dreaded complications? Is it possible to prevent or delay its complications, or maybe even avert diabetes itself? For an in-depth look at what diabetes diagnosis means for your health, join Miles Everett, Registered Dietitian, Nurse and Diabetes Educator at Bristol Hospital Center for Diabetes. Please call the senior center to register for this free program. And on Tuesday, April 3rd, at 10:30 a.m., they're going to be hosting their monthly Veterans Coffee Hour at the senior center. And this is an informational and support meeting that's conducted by Wayne Rue, a Veterans Liaison for Hartford Healthcare at Home, and this is for all veterans over 60 and their spouses. They ask that you register for that event. For Public Works, bulk pickup will be resuming, starting on April 9th, which is a Monday and run every Monday until June 25th. It will exclude May 28th from Memorial Day, and then pick back up for the fall, September 10th, and run every Monday until October 29th. All eligible residents must call CWPM at 860-793-6721 to schedule a pickup. When calling, you'll need to provide your name, address, phone number, and a complete description of the items to be collected. All calls placed by 3:00 p.m. on Friday can be scheduled for collection on Monday, and if there is a high volume of collection that takes place on some of those days, they do pick up the following day. So if Monday rolls around and you don't have your items picked up after you've made that call, they will come back out the next day. Sometimes it just takes them a little bit longer with all the people that are trying to get rid of some of their bulk items. The transfer station on Ranger Lane will be opening for the season on Saturday, April 7th, 2018. The hours will be from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Saturdays only. Plainville residents must show identification, and there is a fee for disposal of items. All of the acceptable items and their fees can be found on the town's website under the Public Works page. And that's all I have to report on.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for either Robert or Scott's report tonight? Good job, thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Okay, we are now on to our public comments section of the meeting. During this time, we welcome the public to come to either podium, state your name and address. You will be given three minutes and one opportunity to speak to the council. I have a few names that have already signed up to speak. We'll go through those first. After that, we will welcome others that wish to speak. Candace Hall, you're first.
My name is Candace Hall. I live at 113 Shuttle Meadow Road. As a Plainville taxpayer, I am troubled by the issue brought to your attention by resident Chris Hart during the public comments section of your February 20th meeting. Mr. Hart told you that copies of a letter written on the Town of Plainville letterhead were put directly into residents' mailboxes by a Town of Plainville employee. Mr. Hart questioned both the letter's content and the method of delivery. My comments tonight will not address the content, but the delivery, which was contrary to postal regulations. Specifically, it is an offense covered by the U.S. Code for Crimes and Criminal Procedures, Title 18, Section 1725. Fines can be leveled in amounts as high as $10,000 per occurrence, and I am providing information on this subject. When Mr. Hart asked the town council who authorized this auction, Chairwoman Paglisi said she didn't know. Town Manager Robert Lee, also a Town of Plainville employee, said he thought that Public Works felt it was the best way to let people know. I question, Public Works felt the best way to provide information to town residents was through an illegal distribution? The town employees could easily have stuck or taped a note to the resident's door? And was the option of mailing the notices ever considered? My question tonight is to ask if there has been any follow-up to this mistake. Was the town employee informed that what he did was against postal regulations and could subject the Town of Plainville to a fine? Was a general notice disseminated to all Town of Plainville employees regarding this topic? That's usually what happens. You disseminate a notice to everyone so that it is not specifically to one particular person. While Mr. Lee appeared to be dismissive of what happened, I feel this is serious. At any time, and especially at this time of fiscal austerity, the Town of Plainville, that's ultimately all of us, the taxpayers, should not risk a fine due to the ignorance or carelessness of town employees. Additionally, I am requesting a copy of any rules/regulations for the use of Town of Plainville letterhead and by whom. And I'm requesting my written comments and the supporting printed matter be submitted as part of the minutes and put in the public records. I'm still very concerned about this.
My name is Diane Sperry, 21 Blood Street, Plainville, Connecticut. A friend of mine asked me to be supportive and attend a meeting with Mr. Lee a few months ago. I didn't realize, I thought it was an informal meeting, and I came with my friend. And she went ahead into the, just as she went into the office, I stood up to go in with her, and Mr. Lee slammed the door in my face without so much as an explanation or any reason for doing that. I started to tell him I wanted to join the conservation thing, and this was about a conservation issue. And the door went slammed before I even got the words out of my mouth, and I feel he should be held accountable. I feel he should be held accountable. I've tried calling the office a few times, and I was hung up on. I don't appreciate this conduct at all. I think that an official with the town should be diligent and cooperative and respectful for those of us that are taxpayers in this town. Thank you.
I'm Marilyn Shoret.
Can I ask, just a minute, Marilyn. Just here, Marilyn, just a minute, just a minute. Diane, did you say you tried to call the town hall and you could not leave a message or get through to leave a message for Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Nobody answered the phone?
I tried calling his direct line.
Okay, and did somebody answer that?
Somebody hung up on me when I said...
No, but did somebody actually answer it?
Yes.
And you could leave a message?
Yes, and they hung up without even, as soon as I said my name, they hung up. I don't know if it was Mr. Lee or who. I'll be honest with you, I don't know who it was.
Well, follow-up, thank you. I'm sorry, Marilyn, I just needed to make sure I understood some things.
I apologize. I just wanted to say that John and I are both standing up in support of Diane.
Me too. Me too. I'll stand too.
Thank you.
Because it's rude.
You're very welcome.
I told you when he did to me one night.
Joanne, you don't have a floor.
Yeah.
Sit down. There's nobody else that has signed up this evening. I will welcome anybody that wishes to speak to the town council. Please come to either podium, state your name and address. You'll have three minutes to speak to the council. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council?
Hi, my name is Danielle Rue, 76 Robert Street Extension, 166 feet away from the proposed location of the dog park. I'm still opposed to this location for the many reasons that I have stated at earlier meetings. Brief reminders, the dangers, the health of my family, liability, increased traffic on the Blind Hill, security, unpredictability of dogs, property value, and people not following the rules and/or cleaning up. I also feel that when you say we need this dog park for socializing and people socializing, that is a problem in itself. If you are socializing, you are not paying attention to your dogs, and that's when problems happen. And again, I will ask you to ask yourselves before voting to imagine this in your backyard. And if you would not want this in your backyard, please, please, don't put this in somebody else's backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Has not spoken? Yes, Dale.
This is not about the dog park. That's after. That's after? You guys?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Yep, I don't speak on anything.
Okay, so anyhow, I just, I don't mean to be rude or anything, but I think that postal thing sounds pretty funny because we had an issue with our lock at my apartment, and I didn't get any mail for a whole week, over a week. And I called the post office three times, and I went down there and screamed at them. And it turned out, my neighbor told me that the postal man, he threw our mail away. And so, you know, he chose, he said, what do you call it? Junk mail. And I always looked forward to the newspapers to see who said what or who didn't say what. And he, everybody, my neighbors considered that junk mail. And I got a little PO'd, but at any rate, I'm just saying, you know, I didn't get any of that stuff because I don't know what I missed. But, you know, watch out for your mail. You should be happy you got it, even if it wasn't correct. That's all. Thank you.
Dale, does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not spoken? Yes, ma'am?
Hello, Amanda Preier, 152 Camp Street, Plainville, Connecticut. I am with the Dog Park Committee. I've been grooming dogs for 15 years, and I just wanted to, you know, address some of the issues that we didn't get to address and some fears that some people might have or might not understand before everybody takes their votes. And a lot of these are issues that are prevalent in our public parks as well. People are worried about diseases, parvo, giardia. These are things that are passed from dog to dog. Well, nobody cleans up in Norton Park as it is anyway, so it's not something that is dog-specific to the dog park. And in a dog park, you're going to be in a confined area. You're not going to want to step and poop, so you're more likely to clean it up, so you're less likely to have that transfer of disease. You're also not going to have as many people walking around at one time. And dogs that are on leash tend to have what's called leash aggression. They feed off their owners, and they try to protect their owners when they are on lead. You will see a lot of dogs charging, and a lot of people don't know how to read their dog and understand that that's not necessarily, I'm friendly, I want to be friendly. It can be a fight, and I've seen more fights... It can be a fight, and I've seen more fights on leashes, just walking around, than I have with off-leash parks or even in my grooming salon where I work. We have anywhere from 10 to 15 dogs in a room that's about a quarter the size of this room every day, been there for five years. It's been open for 40-something years, and they've never had an issue with dogs fighting. We, as groomers, are able to read that. The Dog Park Committee has discussed ways to make sure that everything stays clean, that we can help lessen the burden of the flies and the mosquitoes that are in that area. It's wetlands. There are going to be flies, there are going to be mosquitoes, but we can do the fundraising to put mosquito boxes, put up fly boxes to help decrease those numbers because we don't want the dogs to get diseases either. And I know that there were trainers here last time, and dog parks kill dogs. Well, it happens, yes, but veterinarians kill dogs, groomers kill dogs. I've seen fights inside Petco that have killed dogs.
Oh, my God.
If dogs interact, it will happen, but you can't base that one incident on a whole thing. And I think that that's something that everybody needs to take into consideration, and if there is an issue, it needs to be brought to the committee so we can discuss it and rectify the situations. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that hasn't spoken yet? Yes.
Karen Malarda, Creek, Usher Avenue, Plainville.
Your name again?
Karen Malarda. I'm here just to reiterate what Danielle had said about the dog park. I'm not opposed to a dog park if Plainville feels they need a dog park, but I am opposed to the location. I don't think a dog park belongs behind anybody's house, specifically behind this location. I think it's, I just think it's a wrong place to put a dog park. You know, when you look at other towns, you see where they put their dog parks is usually in an open space, far away from any houses, and that's great. And I think this would be a real deterrent to selling their house if they ever decide to do that. I think the parking situation would be, you know, an obstruction of their privacy. I think it's a big mistake to put it there. I just want to be sure that's said again. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not? Anybody else? Diane.
Thank you. Dan Siselski, 33 Overlook Drive, Plainville, Chairman of the Dog Park Committee. It's been two years now that the Dog Park Committee has been in existence, and during that two-year period, we've done pretty much due diligence, looking at various sites in town. Did a lot of research. We presented a lot of information to you folks as best we can as to how dog parks developed over time and the pros and cons of dog parks and where they're going. You look through the United States right now and see a growing amount of dog parks that are creating, primarily because no longer dogs can run on their own. They need, they need to have some restrictions on them within a concealed area, and that's what we're looking for, is a place where dogs can run, play, and be with their owner. I know you've heard the pros and cons of it. I don't hear an awful lot of cons about the dog park itself, the idea of a dog park. Mostly what I hear as a con is the area of what we selected. Keep in mind, we've looked at six different sites in the town. We spend much time with Mr. Lee talking about the various sites, and at this point, the site that we recommend is Norton Place Extension. At this point, it looks like it's Norton Place Extension or no dog park, at least for the foreseeable future. Now, we're going to have a vote tonight, and certainly the dog park needs five votes for it to pass, so if it's other than a five-vote plus, we won't have a dog park. We will have a dog park committee, and if by happenstance you folks decide to pass the dog park, that's great. We will continue to do our due diligence the best that we can, provide for our neighbors there, and do whatever we have to do necessarily to make life easier for those and not to impose on their privacy, not to impose any kind of actions on them that they would be concerned about. There's a lot of things going on in dog parks now that, as the man just said, we can do, and we're looking forward to it. Keep in mind right now that we're going to raise the funds if we have a dog park, and we're probably, if I would guess, two years away from any kind of dog park as far as any kind of physical action taking place because we don't have any money. I think right now we have 50 bucks, so that doesn't get us very far. Maybe it gets a few flyers out if we can, so we don't, we don't have any. We would like to have the opportunity to do that, and we really want to have the opportunity, if we can, to work with these folks to do something that pleases them and that makes it a place where we both can coexist. So I ask you to give consideration to it. You might want to consider, just top of my head is saying, look, let's go forward with the dog park there. As future plans develop, we come back to the council, and if we meet certain obligations, certain standards, that you folks approve it. Right now, if you say no, we sit back and wait for the next site to show up and say, okay, let's look at that site. I'd like to move forward on it in some fashion. And again, I want to do it in conjunction with these folks, and I want to do it in conjunction with you folks. And remember, we're part of the town, this is, this is a committee of the town, part of the Rec, part of the Rec Committee, which is part of, obviously, of the town, so, you know, we're under your discretion. You can pull a pin on us anytime and shut us down. It isn't like we're an independent, we got an approval and they say, to hell with you. We're not going to do that. But we're looking for, we're looking to do a dog park, and right now, that's the option that we have. And if that doesn't fly and you folks decide to turn it down, what I'm going to ask you to do is keep it on your agenda and say, where can we put a dog park? But I ask you tonight, give some consideration to moving forward with some steps to be met so that we can have, meet our obligation to the town and to these people on a dog park. Let's not shut it down in one fell swoop after all the two years that we put into it. We want to work with you, we want to work with them. So thank you very much for listening, and good luck, and happy spring with the snow coming. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak tonight? Mr. Edman?
Joel Edman, 63 Hollywood Lane, Plainville. Good evening, Town Council.
Good evening.
Town manager and a great taxpayer of the Town of Plainville. Men all paws. Me too. Especially if we see cleavage sprouting out from an excessively low-cut gown or dress on a pretty woman. But women should pause also and take notice of what is happening in the Town of Plainville. Anyone getting frustrated by paying more of your hard-earned money for taxes every year, especially when the grant list is thankfully increasing? That is one reason why more involvement by concerned citizens should be used to fight wasteful spending by those in power, and there is plenty of that going on. Just one hot case in point is Rails to Trails, but no rails project in Plainville. By now, I don't need to re-explain the reasons why it would be ludicrous to follow through with an overextended negatively impacting trail, but the preliminary plans so far have been amazingly approved by Plainville Town Council, which is labeled as Phase Number One. Be forewarned, Phase Number Two, which preliminary plans are being designed are quite obscure, but with a magnifying glass and terrific eyesight, one can follow a new trail to New Britton, Connecticut Fast Track. That has nothing to do with Rails to Trails, North Happy Mass to New Haven Harbor. So far, there are two different scenarios to get there, starting in downtown Plainville, one passing Tilton Quarry on Woodford Avenue, and the other passing by Connecticut Commons Mall on New Britton Avenue, eventually reaching downtown New Britton, Connecticut Fast Track. But not before passing along New Britton Streets and through Walnut Hill Park. Bottom line, New Britton taxpayers, just like Plainville taxpayers, will be on hook forever and also have to deal with all the problems, repair, traffic, safety, eminent domain, and on and on, if this is approved by the federal government in the state of Connecticut. Keep in mind that the East-West Railroad Line is still active, just like the North-South Line in Plainville. So my suggestion is, do you get involved? Silence in this case is not golden unless you are for it and have extra money to pay for it. And what do you think? No rails, no trails, and no thank you. By the way, I recently read in the Harper Current that 200,000 people will be using a trail each year, and it will generate millions of dollars and give the Town of Plainville a big boost for business. More fake news. I'll make you believe that when the Brooklyn Bridge goes up for sale. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not spoken? Lou? Lou?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbank Street. Just a little help on this one. I saw the March 12 budget meeting. I just want an explanation, that's all I want, is a recommendation was made, Tom Tom Councilwoman Tompkins mentioned to approve Department 101 Tom Council for $73,150, an increase of $771, seconded by Councilman Cox. Just exactly what is that? What is Department 101 Tom Council? What is that fund? What's the money for? If I may ask.
Well, you know, we don't get paid, Lou.
So what is the money for?
It's used for a variety of things, dues and memberships to different organizations that the town ascribes to, various things of that nature. I don't, I don't have my books, I can't read them all up, but it's part of...
The large one is the audit, the town audit.
The audit, our town audit.
Okay. This was an accusation, I just wanted to know.
Okay.
So, okay. The other thing, the other two are just, they're going to be brief. Just a little clarity on this thing with the cleaning of the dog park. I really myself don't care one way or the other with the dog park, but the only thing that kind of bothers me, and I said at a prior meeting, I keep hearing the term volunteers. And the thing that scares the most out of me out of volunteers is when anything is new and anything's presented, you have volunteers all over the place. As time goes on, all of a sudden, volunteers seem to disappear. And that being the case, who will be doing the cleaning up? The second thing, the cost of doing things with volunteers, again, we're talking finances. Initially, everybody's high-spirited, let me contribute this, contribute that. As time goes on, it wanes, especially when it comes to finances. So my concern would be a little bit on the financial side, but I'm sure that's being thought of. The only thing, the second thing and final thing for you folks is the design for the trail. And I had mentioned it at the meeting, we have the school and all that, I'm not opposed to the trail. I'm a little confused on the path, the design, wherever the design will be, which has been decided on where the path would go. That's specifically what I'm going after. Has that already been said, the direction we're going to be going from this location, point A to point B?
Yes.
It's already been resolved?
Conceptually, it has been, the plan that the town council approved is point A to point B. However, that now has to go for review, it has to be engineered, it also has to be funded. So the engineering part of it, that could change some of those things that we look at.
Okay, but if everything were in place, then you could actually literally know exactly where we're going right now?
We will be updated regularly as this process moves forward.
The only suggestion I have, and I'm saying, I'm not going to speak for anybody else, I'm going to say to benefit myself. I saw the aerial maps of the little lines going here, and the lines going there, and the lines going there, and then you hear people talking, myself included, about how it's going to impact people, may not impact people. Is there any way to take the design itself, and maybe a part of a town council meeting have conceptual drawings that, when it goes, if I may use it because it's been a big rub up here, Param Road, some way, some conceptual drawings exactly how it's going to impact Param Road. Some people think it's going to be right on top of their houses, I've heard. Some people say, oh, no, no, there's a big border. I've heard that too. Is there any type of conception so when you sit back in this meeting, you should say, aha, I know what they're talking about? Because I think by and large, and I'll include myself as one, I will include myself as one, I really don't know where the heck this is going, and I've heard, in fact, one of the things that stands out in my mind is going down the center of Broad Street. See, and I can't, I can't visualize that, but I guess the engineering staff looks at it, and they know what they're doing. But if I could see it, Madam Chair?
That has, that has not been finalized, that concept that was talked about, that may never happen. In terms of a map, we have very well-defined maps that have been out in the community for quite a while that show exactly where the trail goes and exactly where it's going to go through. So if you want to look at them, we still have them available.
No, no, I see the, I've talked, I've seen the aerial maps. I've already asked for it, it was right on, the next day, it was right on the system, the computer system.
Yep.
I'm just saying, literally draw, as if you were looking at a picture.
A picture of...
For the entire route?
No, no.
Yes.
See, that's the only, I don't want to kill this thing. All I'm saying is there are areas where people don't, myself included, don't really understand how you're going to be able to do this in a certain area, and maybe conceptual drawings will clear that up. Engineering drawings mean something to some people that have been exposed to it. To other people, they mean nothing. There's just lines all over the place. That's all, and I've taken enough of your time, and I thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish, yes? Sorry.
Cindy Rogers, 63 Farmington Avenue. I just want to say, a dog park does not believe, belong in someone's backyard. Simple as that.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not? Yeah? David?
David Spencer, 127 Milford Street Extension. I'd like to talk about the dog park. Every dog park I've ever been familiar with is nowhere near housing. You know, they're usually far away, never in a residential area. I've heard claims that, I mean, obviously, the people on the dog park committee have put in a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of thought to the process, and now I hear claims that they want to work with people. I don't have any idea what that means. If you're going to try to put a dog park anywhere near housing, you're really steamrolling over that homeowner, you know, their rights and their expectations of their property, and, I mean, it's, will do harm to the poor people living in that area. I mean, how can you steamroll over their expectations and then say you're trying to work with them? I don't see how you're working with somebody when you're plopping this thing down, you know, a couple of hundred feet away from their property with who knows what, what, you know, effects it might have on them. I'm just, I'm just saying, if you can't find a spot in town in a non-residential area, you know, away, far away from any house, any homeowner's property, I'd say maybe we just don't have, don't have the right environment in this town for a dog park. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Art?
Art?
Good evening, Arthur Screen, 5 Cornell Street. Back in January during the public hearing, I forwarded the council several videos, three news articles on TV news about dog par- uh, dog park killings, two separate professional dog trainers' videos from YouTube explaining why dog parks are dangerous for dogs. I don't know how many of you have reached out to other dog trainers and asked them their opinion during this process. You had a dog trainer here from out of town at the public hearing. I believe he said he, he trains dogs for the state. He emphatically told you that they were too dangerous, that you shouldn't build one. Now, I've talked about the diseases. This young lady from the dog park talked about you can get the diseases at Norton Park just as well? No. How big is Norton Park compared to the location on Norton Place? You're concentrating the dogs into a smaller lot. When I saw the lot staked out, I've heard that it's an acre. I don't see it more than 100 feet by maybe 200 feet that was staked out. An acre is 47,000 square feet. There's no 47,000 square feet right there. You're lucky if you have a little over a half an acre, maybe a third. You're concentrating, you're, you're in, by passing the location and allowing them to build the dog park there, you are asking people to bring their dogs there, and you're concentrating them down into that small area. Any disease is gonna spread a lot easier at that dog park than it is over here. Young lady also admitted, dog fights do happen at dog parks. It's a fact. It's not something I made up in my head. I showed you proof. It happens. It may happen rarely, but it happens. You are facilitating the first dog attack, if you okay passing this dog park. Mr. Lee, after the public hearing, chased me down in the parking lot because I apparently touched the nerve with him. He came up to me and asked me, if dog parks are so dangerous, why do, why do people keep building them? My answer was, because people ask. He said yes. I turned to him and asked him a question. Just because people ask for something, does that mean a town has to build it for them? Or allow them to build it, in this case?
And what did I say, Art? What was my response to that?
Was no.
Right.
No, you don't have to.
Right, okay, at least be-
So I'm hoping that the con- I didn't get there yet.
Yeah, you weren't gonna get there.
Um, Madam Chair, I got up to-
I'm on.
Another woman got up and talked about how Mr. Lee was rude to her. I consider that being rude right there, I was in the middle of addressing the council.
Okay, Art, you have another few seconds if you need it.
No, that's okay.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Dave Albert, 56 Hybeere Lane. Um, the dog park location was once a residential area, I think you need to keep that in, in mind. It's not anymore, but the fact that some homeowners that were there before elected not to take the buyout from the, the federal government shouldn't have held against them. I'm not against the dog park, I have a dog. Seen walking him down the park two or three times a, a day, and, um, it just shouldn't, it just shouldn't happen. Um, the other thing, I'd like to know, um, what is the town council's position on the Tilk on Quarry?
Council hasn't taken a position on that yet. That is yet to be finalized, and New Britain is reviewing the study we have, that's not our decision to be made.
I want your study, okay. Well, then I would, um, I think it would be wise for the town to keep town employees from saying what a great deal it is and how it's gonna help the town until the town council has voted on it, because of the fact that, um, they, it's out there present, presenting the position that the town, Plameville's totally in favor of it.
No.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? John?
John Fislook, 65 Forestland. Same topic as the last speaker. I brought this up, about you allowing town employee to make it sound like the town is in favor of the Tilk on issue. New Britain Herald, Saturday, Sunday, March 10th and 11th, our view. I had to read this thing three times, called a couple friends to see if that was in their paper, and then checked my calendar to see if it was April 1st. Because the Herald, in my opinion, historically has been against anything that's good for the people, namely the Rails to Trail, they're in favor of it. But I wanna read, all of you should get a copy of this. Cost of Tilk on expansion proposal too high. We only have one planet and we need to treat it like the irreplaceable gem it is. And he finished it off, so we ask, do we want to sacrifice our one and only planet for a bag of money and a hole in the ground? Sorry, Tilk on, we choose Earth. And if this council still can't make up their mind and stop the town manager from making it sound like the town's in favor of it, you people haven't been following this process. There's so much out there of how bad this is. They're gonna have, they say the, people have proven that the water is gonna be polluted. And they said, it's gonna be so diluted, it's still pollution in the water. And this council should get up there and read this and make a decision for our town. This is bad for Plameville, this is bad for our whole world. And you people aren't doing your job. And I wish, like the other speaker said, have the town manager retract that statement and do not allow him to make any more statements of how good this is for Plameville. He does not represent me. You represent me. I elected you, and we elected you, and you have to stop him. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Anybody else? Joanne?
Don't start the clock.
Nope, hasn't started.
I haven't heard you name yet.
Hasn't started yet.
Joanne Edmund?
Go.
166 West Main Street. Now you can start. Uh, my theme tonight is, oh my God, the poor prayer has to go by the wayside because we've only got this lousy three minutes to deal with. And try to get everything in, and I hope the heck I can remember everything, because I just go by the seat of my pants and not with a script. My theme tonight is just say no. Do you remember when some president's lady in the White House said, just say no? It's so easy. Now I'm gonna read you a little letter that I found today. I did a lot of research over at the library. Have a, a lot of stuff on the Tilk on thing. But this is very interesting. Lawmakers must say no to spending. This was in the Bristol Press, I believe, it probably was in the New Britain Herald too. To the editor, in a time, because I think this capsules everything, to the editor, in a time when every penny is counted, and counted on it is not the time, and counted on it is not the time to further burden the already overburdened. Sorry I messed that up. I have serious doubts of the true intention of Connecticut lawmakers, their inability to comprehend the hardships that the existing taxes are doing to the inhabitants of Connecticut. Let us not continue in turn, to turn a blind eye, but rather embrace Connecticut's reckless spending and just say no. In all honesty, if we, the people, handled our personal finances with equal disregard, we would all be living under a bridge. I say to you, just say no. And this is written by Harold Douglas of New Britain. I hope he's gonna be watching, because I thought his letter was terrific. Anyway, I wish you would all said no when it came time to tear down the poor old Linden Street School, when you decided to put in that crumb rubber crap over at the high school football field, when you, uh, said you voted so far on this budget that's costing the taxpayers, or will cost the taxpayers, $1,500,000! A million and a half! That's outrageous for this little sorry town. It doesn't, it, it doesn't make any sense. And for goodness sakes, this Tilk on Quarry thing is, is outrageous. That should not happen. We should not be in favor of it. That's, uh, here, well, I, look at all the articles, just quickly, that I found. Water or wildlife? You're gonna ruin the water, you're gonna ruin the wildlife, you're gonna ruin the watershed. Ugh, environmental studying, eh, Tilk on proposal heads to state controls. I mean, it's, it's really something, it was studied. Tilk on proposal will kill wildlife habitats. I mean, it's, it's outrageous. So I hope that you pay serious attention to this and stop the foolishness. And I hope the taxpayers say no to your budget, because it's too high. And that goes for the municipal side and the Board of Education.
Thank you, Joanne.
Should have done a little better job.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Does anybody else wish to speak? Last chance. Close it. Thank you very much for all your comments.
Well, they let go on for five minutes.
Joanne?
Quiet. No.
We have no old business, we're moving on to new business. Madam Chair, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to establish a public hearing for Monday, April 2nd, 2018, in Municipal Center to hear public comment regarding the town council's fiscal year 2019 proposed budget.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All is in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Number two.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to adopt a resolution entitled Resolution Authorizing Application for Historic Preservation Grant.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All is in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? Number three.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve and authorize the location of a dog park on Norton Place Extension as recommended by the Dog Park Committee.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. I'd like to hear comment. Your vote. Yes. I'm sorry?
Does the maker of the motion want to speak first?
Um, that's up to her.
Sure, um, I believe that, uh, I know a lot of people are opposed, and I think a lot of people are for it, and I think people should be able to get to choose for themselves whether they use a dog park with their dog or not. So I'm planning on voting in favor of this dog park.
Anybody else wish to address the motion? Madam Chair? Yes.
Uh, first, I would like to thank the Dog Park Committee. I think they've worked very hard, they've been dedicated, and I give them a lot of credit, especially for their willingness to both fundraise for the project and to help maintain a dog park after one was established. However, I do have to say that I am going to be voting no. I have thought about this issue for, for quite a while, I have visited the location multiple times, gone to a neighboring town to observe a dog park, and I do have some continuing concerns. As we know, it's very close to a private residence that sits at the corner of the small cul-de-sac where the dog park would be located. And one of my major concerns was that, would be the coming and going of motor vehicle traffic, including the parking of cars in what is really a relatively small area. Now, I don't think it would create a through-traffic issue further up on Robert Street as you get closer to Route 10, I know that issue had come up. But I think that the motor vehicle activity could be an issue in the more immediate area where cars are coming, going, starting up, and parking. I have observed, as I said, a dog park in, in a neighboring town quite a number of times, and they can be a very busy place with a lot of cars coming and out. While the proposed location is close to a residence, I think for those of you who have seen it, it also is somewhat tucked away, and some people might even say a little bit remote and not visible from a lot of places. Uh, and that concerns me as well. Now, I know that most dog owners are completely conscientious, but it certainly is documented that there are some that are not, and there are some potential concerns with a dog park, whether it be the cleanliness issue or some of the other things that have been mentioned. My concern about those is related to the specific location, and I think that those types of incidents are going to be more likely to occur in a residence that is somewhat hidden away, and I think it would be more difficult to monitor those as well in that specific location. So that are the reasons why I would be voting.
Thank you. Okay?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I'd also like to just thank the Dog Park Committee for their work. Um, it's, I'm surprised here it's been two years, honestly, it's been a long time, but in the end, I, I just, I feel, and I know there can be different definitions of a residential neighborhood, but I, I just don't feel this belongs in what I consider a residential neighborhood. Um, and another fact, and I'll kind of piggyback on what Councilwoman Maranti said, it's, it's kind of odd, but it is somewhat hidden. Um, you know, I, I always felt that a, a dog park is something, it should be a little bit more visible, I think that would help with some of the concerns about, um, how people behave. I think generally, when you get more people in the area, they tend to behave a little bit, are a little bit more concerned about their behavior, let me put it that way. Recently, at Suddington, it was noticed that, you know, three or four people were there with their dogs, and they kinda, three or four people were just milling around, talking to each other. One was on the phone, in fact, but once you had 10 or 15 people, everybody kind of separated out and went over and took care of their dogs, that type of thing. So, I think some of those concerns, I do understand that we have concerns regardless if there's a dog park or not. My issue is location, and my plan is to follow up with the Dog Park Committee. I am interested in talking, and, um, I think there is a couple other sites that I would be interested in pursuing, and I'll be happy to share those with you once we pass, but if it doesn't pass tonight, I will be voting no, but, but I am open to continuing the conversation and, and not waiting, continue it quickly.
Anybody else wish to comment?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I've struggled with this decision. I've gone back and forth, I was a no, then I was a yes, and then I was a no. Um, and for a bunch of different reasons. I am a dog owner. If there was a dog park, I would never bring my dogs there. I love my boys, but they play rough, I don't want them to hurt anybody, I don't want them to get hurt. However, the other day at the budget meeting, it came up when we were looking at some information with the chief, that we have an unleashed dog problem here in Plameville, and I see this all the time. I, I walk my dogs unleashed all the time, and we're confronted quite regularly by unleashed dogs, and it's a nuisance, to be perfectly honest with you. Trumbull Park especially is almost a dog park. People letting their dogs run loose on fields, letting them run loose in unfenced areas, and that's close to a residential neighborhood as well. So, I'm gonna vote yes tonight, only because I hope it will help curb the unleashed dog problem we have in this town.
Chair, anybody else? I'd like to weigh in on this, I'd like to hear from everybody.
Um, well, then, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I will be in favor of the dog park this evening. I think that the location is a location where the Dog Park Committee has searched for two years. I do trust when they say that they will be getting the volunteers for it, and regardless of how long those volunteers did stay on, if something did happen at this dog park or it was not taken care of, the game would be locked the following day. That being said, I do have trust that the people on the Dog Park Committee would be able to mitigate these things that are happening there and keep the place safe, and even with working with the Rue family, as they said, which goes along with making sure that their property has the proper privacy, and that would have gone into their expenses, and I am voting in favor of this dog park tonight.
Thank you for your comment. Mr. Saunders?
Uh, I also would like to thank the Dog Park Committee. I know that you guys spent a lot of time looking at sites, talking to people, getting booths in various places, at the Pumpkin Fest and the Balloon Fest, and getting signatures for your petition. I know a lot of, a ton of effort went into it. Contrary to Councilman Nazzo, my wife and I have three dogs, and we would never take them to a dog park for a different- them to a dog park for different reasons. Our dogs are small, they tend to be the victims. And there, our experience with Southington in particular has been that people go there and they turn their dogs loose and they socialize, and their dogs are running around, they don't even know what they're doing. But it's important that everybody know that, you know, when we sit up here, we have to make decisions that can negatively affect us or that are not things that are, that we would participate in in our own lives. I do believe that there is enough support in Plainville for a dog park. I think that having talked to people, again, I talk to people everywhere. I've talked to the grocery store, in the pharmacy, wherever. And I think that there is a lot of support. However, a lot of people who support, that I've spoken to that said they would support a dog park, a lot of them actually said they wouldn't take their dogs there either for similar reasons, the concern about dog waste and dog fights. As you mentioned, Amanda, if you're walking around Norton Park, and my wife and I walk our dogs there frequently, we've actually seen people, their dog goes to the bathroom and they keep right on walking. My wife has even picked up after other dogs, which I refuse to do. If they're confined, I'm concerned that they won't pick up, just as they don't walk in that same circuit at Norton Park. I've seen people who walk their dogs off-leash, or they're off-leash, at Paderewski, at Norton Park, at Trumble Park. Some people put their dogs in the fenced-in area where kids play, and they don't clean up after their dog and then kids play in there. So we already have leash, leash laws or rules are not being followed. They don't clean up after the dogs, so kids can play in it. And I'm not convinced they're going to follow the rules in a dog park either. Ultimately, I will say this, I will support a dog park, but not in this location.
Thank you.
Okay, so last. Thank you, Dan and your committee, for all the work that you've done. I know that you approached the project with sincerity, and you did your due diligence. You did a lot of work creating a PowerPoint for us. You did an awful lot of work. And I know that you worked a long time. It wasn't just a couple of weeks. You were out there collecting signatures, talking to people, and engaging the community in explaining your vision for a dog park and what you hope to have happen. And I do appreciate that. I know how much work it is when you're trying to get a project off the ground in this town. I worked on one many years ago with one other person, and it took seven years for our vision to come to fruition. You're at year number two, but I do appreciate all that you have done. And I certainly hope that you will not go away in despair because hopefully we can do something else. I will support the dog park. I have told you before, and I've told everybody else that I spoke to, that I would support that location. I think it's been a long time since it was first mentioned to everybody. I agree with Councilman Cox that combinations could be made to make that dog park something special, and that wouldn't intrude in the neighborhood. I do believe that, and I know others will disagree with me. We're going to just disagree about that, but that's okay. Predicting traffic right now, predicting behavior of dogs, predicting behavior of people, I'm not going to try to do that because I can't do that. I don't know how a dog would behave or a person would behave. I will say one thing, though, about dogs getting sick. My husband and I owned a German Shepherd probably 35 years ago, and our dog got parvo, which is a very serious disease that dogs mostly died from at the time. The dog was never in a dog park. He was never anywhere except he went to the vet, he was in my yard, he was not in a dog park, and he didn't get parvo from being socialized with other animals. So I think some information may not be entirely accurate in terms of what happens to pets, but pet owners take that risk when they bring their animals to dog parks and certainly what they, they are aware of. So to say this will happen, maybe that's a little overstating what potentially might happen. At any rate, I will vote yes for the park. I appreciate your time, again. And I'll take a formal vote right now, but according to the polling that I have right now, there's four yeses, three noes. The motion's going to fail. So please, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed?
No.
Four to three. Motion's failed, and the location will not be approved. We'll make your agenda. Number four.
Madam Chair. Motion to approve the tax refund. They're on the agenda.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? Any motion to go into a second session?
Madam Chair. Motion to move into a second session.
Second.
For pending litigation, may I?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.